Okay, everybody, I'm going to call this meeting in order of the Montclair City Council. And I think today I was reminded that today was the 54th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. So we will begin our meeting with the invocation, the pledge allegiance. I know that Father Clarence Sadoo from Our Lady of Lords is in the audience. And then who's doing the pledge? Councilman Lopez is doing the pledge, so please stand. Go ahead, Father.
Good evening to everyone, and greetings from Our Lady of Lords Catholic Church. And first, before I proceed to the invocation, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the administration of the city through the office of the city clerk, Andrea Merrick, for extending the invitation to me to do the invocation. So I'd like to invite everyone to dispose ourselves and invoke the presence of God as we pray, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. All powerful and gracious God, we come to you today humbly asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as this city council begin this meeting. Guide the hearts and the minds of our leaders, our local leaders, in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Help them to engage in meaningful discussions. Help them to grow closer as humble servants, and nurture in them the spirit of collaboration and bonds of community. Fill them with your grace as they make plans and choices, decisions that might affect the lives of people in this city of Montclair. Empower your wisdom upon their activities so that their affairs and plans may reach a successful conclusion. And as we continue striving for advancement and progress for our city, may you awaken in all of us, your people, a commitment to justice, the sanctity of the family, and the dignity of each individual human life, and to the truth that human rights begin when human lives begin. Lord, we thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon our wonderful city of Montclair. We thank you for our hard-working leaders, employees, and volunteers. We thank you for helping us realize how your presence always accompanies us each day of our lives. So today and always, we rejoice for claiming us to be your own people, your children, citizens of your kingdom. May that reality makes us all the more committed to being faithful citizens on earth. We ask this through Christ our Lord now and forever. Amen. And in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag at a time when people in Ukraine are fighting for self-determination and freedom. Let us salute the world's greatest symbol of freedom for nations across the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, city clerk, can we get the real call, please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Ru. Mayor Dutre.
I hear.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments is the next time on the agenda. So if you have an item that's not on the agenda, or it's on the consent calendar, I'm assuming that people already submitted their cards. And if you're on Zoom, we have 13 on Zoom today, you want to talk again about a non-agenda ized item or consent calendar item, this would be a good time to hit the raise hand feature or hit star nine if you wish to speak. If you're to speak on the public hearing item, which is item 7A on the Independent Cities Finance Authority, or if you're here to speak on item 10, business items regarding the censure resolution, then please don't hit your hand yet. So at this time, I want to ask the city clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on a public comment?
Yes, Rob Pipersky.
I'm going to remind everybody, you do have five minutes.
The city of Montclair is currently being sued by two city employees who were sexually harassed with unwanted sexual advances by Councilman Ben Lopez. Bruce Culp noted at the last council meeting, these lawsuits would cost the city money, but he only touched on the surface on the cost. These lawsuits have the potential to cost the city astronomical sums of money. These lawsuits have the potential for five, six, or seven-figure settlements each. These funds will come out of the general fund, and the city of Montclair recently passed Measure L Sales Tax Initiative to move Montclair into the future, paying for city projects out of the general fund. Now this money will need to be diverted to pay for lawsuits, potentially millions of dollars would be pulled from the general fund to pay attorney's fees, additional investigations searching for additional victims, and eventually the settlements. When this money is taken from the general fund, it means this money will not be available for upcoming planned projects, salaries for employees, equipment such as fire engines or police cars. What about road and alley repairs, park maintenance? These projects, many of these projects were being planned before Councilman Lopez was ever elected. The prime example of this is the lighted signs being installed around the schools. Councilman Lopez seems to imply he is responsible for these installed items. He is not. These projects were planned before he was even elected to his disgraced council position. Mayor John Dutre, Mayor Protem Bilrou, councilpersons Denise Johnson, Carissa Martinez, and former Mayor Protem Carolyn Raft are the council who voted for these safety devices to be purchased and installed. All Councilman Lopez can do is try to take credit for other people's work. I would hope the members of this council call it out when Councilman Lopez tries to take credit for other councilpersons' work. Councilman Lopez can do nothing by himself on this council as much as he wants others to believe. It takes a minimum of three votes, a majority, for anything to pass, and the whole council should get credit for voting to approve staff projects, not any one member. The council are stewards of public funds, and you must do all you can to protect the public trust. At the last meeting, I listened to several people praise Councilman Lopez as wonderful and how they trust him and do not believe he could do such a thing. Trusted teachers, coaches, priests, church pastors commit heinous acts and are then arrested and charged. My guess is, will you also believe them unless you actually see the act being committed? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, Andrea?
That was it for a public comment.
All right. Then we will now move on to public hearing. So we have an item for consideration. I'm going to open the public hearing, and we'll start with staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, Augusta Communities, a 501(c)(3) organization formed in 1998 in partnership with the former Montclair Redevelopment Agency to acquire, own, and manage mobile home parks in Montclair with affordability restrictions, is proposing to refinance its 2012 mobile home park revenue refunding bonds issued by the Independent Cities Finance Authority. Mobile home revenue refunding bonds will be an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $30 million. The proposed refinancing is projected to secure approximately $7.5 million in new bond income for Augusta for a variety of purposes, including refunding of the 2012 bonds previously issued by the Independent Cities Finance Authority, costs related to issuing the bonds, maintenance and expansion of mobile home park resident services programs, maintenance and renovation of Augusta's three mobile home parks in Montclair, real property acquisition, and repayment to the Montclair Housing Authority of RDA loans provided to Augusta in the early 2000s, plus accrued interest. The repayment by Augusta to the Housing Authority is for the aggregated sum of $3,160,414, calculated as of March 1, 2022, with interest accruing to accrue in the amount of $145.53 per day until the payment is received by the city in full. Payment on the Housing Authority will be made by an irrevocable instruction to the trustee of the bonds to pay the full amount to the Housing Authority. Full payment of the RDA loans is a condition precedent to the city council's approval of refinancing the 2012 bonds. Repaid funds will be deposited with the Housing Authority and restricted to affordable housing projects at the place and time of the city's choosing. The Housing Authority is designated recipient, is the successor of the Montclair Redevelopment Agency. You will recall back in 2011, there was a bill introduced in the legislature, ABX-126, and the California Supreme Court's decision in California Redevelopment Association versus Montesantos, the finance director at that time for the state of California, provided for the dissolution of California Community Redevelopment Agencies, which occurred in February of 2012. Upon full payment of the RDA loans, the Housing Authority, through deeds of reconvenance, will release the deeds of trust that secure the RDA loans for each of the mobile home parks in the city of Montclair, owned and operated by Augusta Homes. Augusta has also agreed to the inclusion of certain additional regulatory agreement provisions which are included in Exhibit A to Resolution Number 22-3341. Exhibit A provisions have been incorporated into each of the regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for Augusta's three mobile home parks. I have put copies of those regulatory agreements on your desk seat in front of you. I also emailed them to you last week, so you should have had an opportunity to look at each of those regulatory agreements. Copies pursuant to Section 12 of the regulatory agreements, each regulatory agreement becomes effective upon its execution and will remain effective during the period of the qualified project period, which is approximately 30 years after the date of issuance of the bond. There are some variances within the language in the regulatory agreements that require that certain conditions and provisions be met, but generally look at it as about a 30-year period in which the bonds will be in effect for payment. Accordingly, based on that 30-year provision, the affordability covenants would be extended to 2052. The Montclair Housing Authority will be beneficiary to the regulatory agreements and have the right to enforce the affordability covenants as contained in Section 3 and 4 of each of the regulatory agreements, and again, that language is specified in Exhibit A, which is attached to the resolution. The Housing Authority's right to enforcement shall be subordinate to the rights of the ICFA and trustee, and because Montclair is an associate member of the Independent Cities Finance Authority, which serves as the issuer of the bonds, the city council is required to approve the proposed refinancing of the 2012 bonds as a prerequisite for the financing authority to complete the refinancing structure for the 2020 bonds, the financing authority being the Independent Cities Finance Authority. Due to the volatility in the taxable bond market, Augusta is proposing to split the 2022 bonds into taxable and tax-exempt refunding bonds. The tax-exempt bonds trigger a TEFRA hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982. Tax-exempt bonds are qualified private equity bonds for purposes of the IRS Code of 1986, and the proposed ICFA issuance must be approved by the city council through the adoption of Resolution Number 22-341. A TEFRA hearing is an IRS requirement for nonprofit borrowers seeking tax-exempt bonds through a conduit issuer such as the city of Montclair. Conduit issuers act as a pass-through and are not liable for repayment of the bonds even in cases of default. The TEFRA hearing is conducted by the city council to allow members of the public to comment, contest, oppose, or support the use of tax-exempt bonds for a nonprofit borrower such as Augusta. IRS rules require that no presentation by either the city or Augusta be made regarding the projects to be financed through the TEFRA hearing process that you are conducting today. The TEFRA hearing is required to be held by the city council prior to Augusta's next board meeting, which we understand is scheduled for August 13 of this, obviously of this month, or I'm sorry, April 13 of this month. The pre-board TEFRA hearing allows the board to address any issues that may be addressed today during this hearing process. A TEFRA notice must be published seven calendar days prior to the public hearing, tonight's public hearing, and we did comply with that obligation and responsibility. Fiscal impacts related to the city council's consideration of this item are that Resolution Number 22-3341 requires the repayment of RDA loans to the Housing Authority as a beneficiary to the Montclair Redevelopment Agency, plus accrued interest at the rate of 2% per annum. Again, the aggregated amount of the sum of the payment on the RDA loans is $3,160,434.14, calculated, again, as of March 1, 2022, with interest accruing in the amount of $145.33 per day until the payment is received in full by the city. Payment to the Housing Authority will be made by an irrevocable instruction directing the trustee of the bonds to pay the full amount of the RDA loans to the Housing Authority. The full payment of the RDA loans is a condition, again, precedent to the city's council's approval of the refinancing of the 2012 bonds. Funds will be deposited with the Housing Authority and restricted to affordable housing projects, again, at the place and time of the city's choosing. Neither the city nor the Housing Authority shall have any responsibility or liability with respect to the 2022 bonds. The 2022 bonds shall not constitute a debt to the city or to the Montclair Housing Authority, and payment of the 22 bonds shall be the sole responsibility of Augusta. Adoption of Resolution Number 22-3341 shall not obligate the city or the Housing Authority to provide any financing related to the projects, except as otherwise provided by the Montclair Municipal Code. City will not be responsible for approving any application or take any other action in connection with acquisition or operation of the projects, make any contribution or advance any funds to the Independent Cities Finance Authority, or take any further action with respect to the Independent Cities Financing Authority or its membership. City council's approval of the proposal to refinance the 2012 bonds is solely to satisfy the requirements of the 2012 Joint Powers Agreement between the city and the financing authority, which requires the city council to approve the refinancing that is before you this evening. The city is not a direct participant in the refinancing structure, has no liability for repayment of the bonds, and provides no oversight responsibility related to the refinancing structure or the cash flow generated by the bonds and any associated service, capital, or maintenance programs. With that, staff recommends that the city council consider adoption of Resolution Number 22-3341.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? And Ed, just a question again, in terms of the arena numbers, will this count for the numbers? I don't think it does, does it?
Yes, this will count for the renet numbers.
Oh, so we will get renet numbers.
Yes.
We'll get 400 units?
Yes, because there is a refinancing that is occurring, we have been advised by the state of California that these numbers related to the affordable housing units at the various projects will count as new numbers going forward.
Great. Mayor Protem Ru.
I was going to wait to reference numbers, but as long as we're on them. For the edification of the public and those at home, the total number of spaces, which would be the total number of units that are there, are 441. The estimated population, 1,490. The median average income, $38,595, and the space rent each month is $626. This does go a long way to helping our lower-income families so that they have an opportunity to live a dignified life. When you hear about the regional housing need assessment numbers, rena, we have a specific number to meet. This helps us meet that. It's especially at the very low end. And when you look at space rent in the region, $626 a month is very, very reasonable right now. And when you look at a median income of $38,595, that's well below even the median household income for the city of Montclair. So we're really, these parks really serve a very specific at-risk community. Thank you.
All right. So like I said, the public hearing is open, and we're going to take public comment now. So Andrea?
Lee McDougal.
I think I've heard of Lee McDougal somewhere in the past. Recognize our former city manager, Lee McDougal.
Well, good evening. Let me just, first off, say I like what you've done to the place. It looks good, the council chambers, very nice. I'd like to offer some historical perspective on how we got here tonight and where we started from. In the good old days, these council chambers used to be filled with angry mobile home park owners.
Yep, that's true.
It was meeting after meeting after meeting. And they were angry because the owners of the parks would arbitrarily increase the rents and price people out of their homes, essentially. As a result of that, city council did adopt rent control ordinance for the mobile home parks, and Augusta Homes was created and offered the city a lifeline. Although the staff report insinuates that the city had something to do with that, the fact of the matter is the city had nothing to do with that. We were, I would, I'd like to say we were saved by Augusta. And Augusta provided an opportunity to the city of Montclair and the three parks to take the profit motive out of the mobile home parks, to take away the motive of the owner to increase rents. And in doing so, Augusta Communities was created as a nonprofit, and the nonprofit bought the mobile home parks. In order for the nonprofit to make the numbers work, it came to the city of Montclair and the Redevelopment Agency and asked for assistance. The Redevelopment Agency agreed, it was a great thing to do, and offered the assistance from the 20% set-aside money from the Redevelopment Agency. So that money was loaned to Augusta Homes, and we were able to buy the three parks. I became a member of the board of Augusta, and I have served as president now probably for the past 10-plus years. And how I got on the board, I was sitting in Mr. Starr's seat, and when Augusta came and made their presentation, I strong-armed Augusta into putting me on their board because they were a new entity. And my purpose on the board was to protect the interests of the city. And I've been on that board now for, I don't know, 25 years. It's been a long time. We are very proud of what we've accomplished. We have now, as the staff report indicates, six mobile home parks, three of those are in Montclair. Our purpose, when we approached the city in September, the partner with us in this refinancing, the idea was we had some capital improvements that needed to be made at the parks. One of the parks, we wanted to put fire hydrants in. That's a costly endeavor, and rather than go to a bank, borrow the money, and then come to you for a rent increase for the people in the parks, we thought, and we thought everyone would think this was a good idea, that we could refinance the debt on the park, pull some cash out, and pay for the capital improvements, and then we wouldn't have to raise the rent. We wouldn't have to come before you asking for a rent increase for the work we've done. Well, the staff report indicates the number is thrown out $30 million. We have never thought about $30 million. We've never asked for $30 million. I think $30 million is a cap. Is that right, Mr. Starr? $30 million is a cap. In September, when we approached the city with this plan, we figured we could bond for about $7.5 million. Of that $7.5 million, we could pay the city back its $3-plus million, and we'd have $3 million to put into our capital needs in the three parks in the community. Well, since September, and we're here tonight, interest rates have risen, and right now, the best we could do is about $3.5 million. So we could issue the bonds at 5%, pay you back your money at 2%, and then we're paying 5% on 2% money for the next 30 years. So the board will have to consider that. We'll have to consider if that makes financial sense to us, or we can wait for a later time when interest rates are more favorable and pursue a refinancing at that time. But right now, it's touch and go. If you approve the item this evening, our board will meet, we will meet with our financial people, and we'll try to make sense of it. If we can issue the bonds, we'll do it. If we can't, we won't. And we may come before you in another year, or two years, or three years, and hopefully we can get this done in a timely fashion so we can take advantage of the lower interest rates. Also with me are Executive Director Suzanne Taylor, Deputy Director Erica Taylor. They've submitted cards. They can talk more about the details, more so than I can.
Thank you.
But I just wanted to give you that overview.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I do want to say, Lee, before you step down, you know, yeah, the council chambers and style, I think, seems like it, and I know Lee McDougal was always important, style was very important to him.
Yeah.
So it's in honor of Lee McDougal.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work on Chaffey College.
Suzanne Taylor. Hello, I'm Suzanne Taylor, Executive Director of Augusta Communities.
Hello, Suzanne.
Hi. 400 North Mountain, Oakland, California. I wanted to first say thank you to all the council members that were able to come by our parks, starting, beginning in the spring, and we tried to meet recently with Mr. Lopez, and so anytime anybody would like to come visit our communities, it would be welcome to show them around and show them all our new projects. We have a lot, lot going on. I think I had submitted a report to the city back in almost a year ago, and at that time, we talked about all the community improvements we were doing, and I don't think I had brought the number with me quite yet, but it's something like $6, $6.5 million of improvements we've done since we purchased the park. I just want to make a few comments, and then I'll answer any questions you might have. The staff report on four or five times brought up the number 7.5 million, and just for the record, I needed to make clear that we will be repaying the bonds back, we'll refund them, refinancing them, and that 7.5 million was the best we could do, beginning in September when the rates were low, through around the end of December, a little bit through January, and those numbers held true. But today, we can't raise 7.5 million, so I didn't want it to be misleading. We can raise about a little bit over 3, 3.5 million. That's enough to pay the city back, but there's no extra funds, as Mr. McDougal alluded to earlier, between the 3.5 and the 7.5. So I didn't want that to confuse anybody, because the numbers on a bond issue are confusing. The $30 million that Mr. McDougal referenced is a maximum amount of bonds that could ever be issued under the best of circumstances. So it doesn't really seem to have a basis in reality, it's just what happens in the bond market when they sell these bonds, that's how they do the TEFRA hearings. We're not going to be raising that much money. Lastly, I would like to say that, oh no, I covered both those points. The projects that we will not be able to do because we didn't raise money between the $3.5 million, $3-something million to pay back the city in the 7.5, the three projects that we had on our immediate list was renovation of the clubhouse at Villa Montclair and installing new fire hydrant, a fire hydrant system in Montclair. We don't have one there in Villa Montclair. And then lastly, those people who did come to our parks noticed we had a lot of construction going on. So we have to redo the streets in the park over the next two years, and we're going to use the money for that. So we will be paying for those out of cash flow and not out of the bond money. They may be delayed, we'll see how that goes. And so I haven't, do you have any questions? For me?
Let's do this. Do we have any members of the public that want to speak? Is there another, anybody else? Any public comments? No? Okay. And I can stop there, and I'll just do this. We will bring it back to the city council. You can stay up there, Suzanne, if you wanted to. I can stop this clock somehow, nice. And then, so I'll bring it back to the city council, I'll start with Councilmember Denise Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Suzanne. I just have a question for you. Here I am. She's, here I am.
Sorry, I can't hear. I thought I could see.
So I do have a question.
Yeah.
If we decide to wait and look at this again at some time in the future, what if interest rates don't go back down for? what if interest rates don't go back down for a year, or two, or 12?
Well, we're not asking you to wait. Because this TAFRA notice is just a hearing to let the people know that we're considering issue bonds. There's no reason to wait for it. As a matter of fact, we ask you not to wait.
Good.
Because what will happen is that when, when we get to issue the bonds, first we have to go through a rating process from Standard and Poor's. That takes 30, 45 days. Then we price the bonds. If at that point in time, it's not feasible anymore, then we'll hold off and watch the market. And the TAFRA hearing is good for like 12 months or so.
Okay.
Yeah. So we are not asking you to delay. Approving it keeps our options open. I think what Mr. McDougal, if I can speak for him, and scary thing to do, but you know, if we can, we're committed to repaying the city loan right now. At some point, if the interest rates are too high and we can't even meet that, then, then that's another discussion.
Okay.
But we hope maybe they'll click down and we'll be better off. They were at 2.98, now they're up above 5. So that's, that's dilemma.
Thank you.
But we ask you not to wait, actually.
Excellent. Well, you answered my question.
Okay.
I also have a comment.
Okay.
When I came to do the tour at Augusta, I think I had a vision in my mind what a mobile home park was supposed to look like. And Augusta was not it. It's not, it looked like any other community here in this town or any town. It was well-maintained. Everybody seemed to be pleasant. The members that I met in the clubhouse were exuberant about the parties and all the events that they have there. It seems like a pretty cool place to be, so kudos to you.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate that. I'll pass that along to my staff.
All right.
They work hard to, to bring those programs to the residents.
Residents are happy.
Yeah, they are.
Yes. And I was particularly impressed by the new parking area, solar panels.
Oh yes, the solar panels. The solar panels are still under construction. They probably, you know, we're kind of waiting at the, we're at the mercy of Southern California Edison. So it's going to be a couple of months more. But it seems like, I was a little worried, honestly. I thought, you know, maybe they'd be a bit obtrusive, but everybody loves them. Everybody loves them.
So that's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
I have Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Suzanne, I apologize for the several attempts in us trying to schedule and book a tour.
Sure.
I've had some unfortunate circumstances pop up well beyond my control. I hope you got my text on Friday.
I did, thank you.
I was going to ask what projects, because in the staff report, on our page, 13 of our staff report, it lists that maintenance, the use of the funds would be used for maintenance and expansion of resident service program, maintenance and renovation of the projects, real property acquisition. I was going to ask, because there's no itemized list in our report of those potential projects. You touched on the clubhouse.
Yeah, the, the itemized list that they're referring to mostly is called a physical need study. And you hire a third-party firm to analyze the infrastructure of your community. And then you project how much you have to save each year to pay for those capital improvements. And they, they project it over a 40-year period. So we take that capital, that physical need study, we budget it out, and then we meet with our property managers and we get what they believe need to be done in the parks. And we look at our resident surveys and look to see what they've asked for. And then we blend all those together and come up with a number. The, the ones that are, were going to be specifically related to the extra funds that we were going to raise were the fire hydrants, the clubhouse renovation, the street repairs over the next couple of years. And also, we were going to try to put some money into home improvement programs. Right now, the valuations, the value of the homes is rising substantially, which really creates a dilemma for us. Like, we're really, really happy for the residents who have been able to finally get some generational wealth from their asset value growing. Their house used to be worth $100,000, $50,000, $20,000. And now it's, now they're selling in the park. I think Erica found one listed today for $260,000. And that's an older home. So we were worried about keeping affordability because we don't have total responsibility for affordability. We have responsibility for space rent. And then we have responsibility for making sure low, lower income, a percentage of the population who applies to live there are lower income. But we can't control their housing value. So on one hand, they've got this amazing experience that they have got some money. But on the other hand, it's harder for us to meet our affordability tests. So we were looking at programs that would help newcomers who want to buy a home in our park, who are lower income, to, to buy a home there. So we're looking at funding those. And we were looking at funding, and I think Mayor Dutray went, and I think, I think you did too, Denise. We did a house tour, right, of the renovated house. So we're going to use some of those funds to renovate existing homes and sell them to lower-income people and put a covenant on those homes if possible. So that'll have to come out of cash flow in the future as well. We have a savings account. I don't want to mislead you. We have saved over the years, but we have a savings account. It's like your, it's like your city reserves. You want to maintain it. So we'll kind of move in and out of those funds and, and see how we can go.
Now, how old is the clubhouse at Hacienda?
They're all like, they were, the clubhouse at Hacienda has been fully renovated since all you guys have visited. We renovated that. It's been painted. So it's, it's in good shape. The one in Hacienda is in good shape. It has some renovations that are coming up. But it's beautiful. And that's, that's the one that had all the woodwork on the wall. And then Villa Montclair has not been renovated. That's the one that we were going to enlarge the kitchen. It's this little tiny thing right now. And the office is about this big. And so we were going to add an office and add a home or club room and take the asbestos out of the ceiling, you know, a major renovation. And that came in at, what was that, Erica? About $800,000. Probably today it'd be a million with costs going up, so $800, a million dollars. So we can do some of that incrementally instead of all at once, but that's what that was.
And if I understood the comments from Mr. McDougal and yourself, the fire hydrant project will be either postponed, on hold, or what have you because of, depending on the availability of funds and interest rates?
That's, that's right. We do have some savings that we could earmark for that, but we'll probably want to wait a few years so as not to take them out of our reserves.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portenru.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I do appreciate the improvements you've done to the parks.
Thank you.
I really appreciate an amenity that many people don't know about, the little library that allows the residents to borrow a book, put one back. It really is, is unique to those three parks and I think is a true benefit to the residents. And especially the younger people who are there who just want a book to read and then get another one. So that's, that's a positive. With the, well, and starting with the refinancing, were there a lot of meetings with the city on this? Because this is a very complicated issue.
Well, there wasn't a lot of meetings with city staff. We eventually were able to connect with city attorney. And we at one point spoke with the bond counsel, Mark Hibbs, and the municipal advisor, Scott Smith, right? Scott Smith, yeah.
Okay.
But we did not connect with city staff on this matter.
That's...
It is complicated moving.
It's complicated and... Anyway. With the refinancing, you've mentioned some of these projects, and it will have to come out of reserves. One of the things I was thinking of in the last week or so, or after receiving the agenda, is it possible to look at, for some of these, the state of California grants that they may have? I know that those are possibilities. I, I, I'm not saying they're the, the end-all, be-all, but there may be some opportunities to work to get some grants, especially when I think of things like fire hydrants and things like that, that the state may have some money for.
Yeah. And, and the Water District might too. And we will look at that for sure. We do go after grants. As a matter of fact, we just got the infrastructure grant to, to put internet in two of our parks that were informational deserts, as you, as you may recall. And we, there are grants. There's one that's really kind of well-known in the mobile home park world, which is called M-Prop. But they're very restrictive in the way you use those funds. You really have to use them for acquisition and, and not rehabilitation. They're trying to change that right now. As a matter of fact, we have a conference tomorrow, which I'll be speaking at and kind of bragging about our Montclair parks. And they're thinking about adopting new regulations. But each time they have adopted the regulations, none of the money has been used. It's like probably upwards of $50 million now. But no one can fit their project into that, into that kind of mold that they have.
And, and the reason I mention that is because you do, many of these grants are targeted to lower-income
Right.
communities, lower-income census tracts, lower-income neighborhoods, and...
Well, you would think it would be the perfect, I think to answer you even more directly, you would think that the perfect grant would be for a homebuyer to buy their home, right? But most of the time, they would get a home loan, a traditional home loan. We're, we have chattel financing for homes. It's like a car loan.
Right.
So now, just council mem, uh, council, Senator Leva introduced some legislation where they would be using any money that they would use for any other housing project. Any of the state money would also apply to manufactured housing. But it's still a chattel loan. And there's just, it's not really available for chattel loans. So that's, that's one of the dilemmas. But we absolutely monitor those all the time.
There may be ways to change some of that down the line and...
Yeah, and they have been trying.
And then another thing...
Complicated in this, in manufactured housing.
It is.
Yeah.
And the, another, because what they'll say is that, as with a regular home, single-family home in any of our neighborhoods, you own the structure of the land. And here, they don't own the land. They own just the, the unit.
Right.
And traditionally, those have not appreciated very quickly.
Right, until, until...
Until recently.
And I don't really think that if you main, have maintained your home and our, if, if a resident homeowner has maintained their home, they've always made money off their homes in our park. Our valuations have always been increasing. But they're dramatically increasing now, along with the rest of housing in California.
And then something else, and, and because some of my questions had already been answered, such as the issue about the rate and whether you'd rather wait or do it now. Clearly, you'd prefer to do it now. There, and I will send you this number, this bill number separately. But there's a bill that's working through the legislature where California receives federal funds for housing. The bill would say to take 30% of that money and put it aside for homeownership, be it the, a tax credit, a first-time homebuyer program, some type of an incentive. So in the next couple of days, I'll get that to you because I think it may be something you and your organization and other mobile home groups could get behind. And it would certainly help with some of the problems right now in acquiring a mobile home. Because it is, it traditionally was the first line that somebody could go into to help at least have a more stable living situation.
Absolutely. And, and to just clarify something you just mentioned, the TAFRA hearing is required just so that we could consider moving forward on
Right.
the bond deal. It doesn't mean that, that we will be able to do it. But we can't do it without the, the council bringing to, the attention of the potential project
Right.
to the residents. So I don't want any, I don't, I'm a big person, I don't want to mislead anyone
No.
about that. I mean, the approval is so that we can move forward. It doesn't mean that it will ever really work out in the end.
Right. And it, it's to give you what you need to do, so...
Right.
Okay, that, I've already had some of my questions answered, and this answers some of the other ones.
Thank you.
Okay, Suzanne, I just want to understand again. It appears you want to get 3.5 million now, as opposed to the original 7.5 and, and the city repayments, 3.1. So basically, there's a, there's a balance of about $400,000. Am I correct as of right now, based on 5% interest rates?
Um, that is all in, it's a, it's a, well, we, when I was in college, we called it a WAG, which is a wild-ass guess. So I don't know. That 400 could be 40.
Okay.
It could be 4,000.
Yeah, does he also have costs?
600?
Maybe, yes.
Yeah, I can't say that that's going to be there.
The, the bonds you refinance right now, what's the interest rate on those?
I'm sorry?
The bonds you are refinancing, what's the interest rate?
They are a mixed interest rate of about 4.9.
Okay.
Is that right?
Right.
I, I, we rerun these every day, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I want to say this, that Lee was correct. Lee gave a very accurate history of the mobile home parks in Montclair and how Augusta got started. And you guys have played a big role in those three mobile home parks, twofold, of affordability, of course, in terms of the space rents. And then also the improvements of the parks, making sure the parks look good. And they do look good, and
Thank you.
I've been impressed. So sorry that this has taken much longer. I know you were calling me up and bugging me about the interest rates going up. And I know on the other side, the city with bond counsel, the complications, trying to put this all together, the negotiations, maybe if you want to call it as well. So I'm sorry that it's gotten to this point and it's more dreary than you were hoping for at this point. So I think Councilmember Lopez is...
Yeah, just to, just to, a quick follow-up. You stated in answer to Councilmember Ru's question that you had not met with staff about this item. The item before us, in its present language and proposal, are you comfortable with it?
Well, it's not, you know, we talk about negotiations. It's not, it's hard to talk about this, actually.
You did say you didn't want us to delay.
I do want to do it. I'm comfortable with it. I just wish it wasn't this way.
Okay, so I want to do is close the public hearing, make it official. And then who, can I get a, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the item as presented this evening.
Second. Okay. And I assume that satisfies the TAFRA hearing's opportunity. So if that's the case, then let's have a roll call vote, our electronic vote. Nothing else, Lee? We vote by electronic now. Can you believe that? Okay. Oh, everybody vote? Okay, it's adopted 5-0. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, the next items we have will be consent counters. So again, I'll start at my left. Any members on my left want to remove a consent counter item?
Yes. B2 and C1, just for a quick comment that relates to both.
B2 and C1, these are comments. Okay.
B like boy 2.
All right. B2, C1. All right. Okay, how about my right? Anybody on the right want to pull the consent counter item?
Mr. Mayor, B like boy 4.
B4.
C like, well, C1's already been pulled, and C4.
So you're pulling, just clarification, C4 and what was the other one?
Or C1, B4.
Oh, B4.
B like boy 4.
All right, so I got C2. Oh, sorry, B2, B4, C1, and C4. Okay, so we're going to pull 4. Okay, so let's start at my left. And let's start with, just, let's go with Councilmember Martinez on her, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Dutrey. So just two months ago, our city applied for the Clean California Local Grant Program and has already obtained over $4 million that is going to go towards renovating Sunset Park. I believe it's 4.7 million. And I, I, that's just fantastic. I just want to make sure that for those residents that don't read the agenda packets, they are made aware of the amazing things that our city is doing to improve. Can I comment on C1 as well, since it's just, it's related? Okay. All right, thank you. And, and so C1 is asking for the council to approve continuing to use the grant writing service that we've been using since 2019, which since then has seen a return of $110 for every dollar the city has spent in grant writing. The Sunset Park grant is just an example of the huge amounts of money that are brought into the city because of this grant writing service. So I wanted to recognize all the effort that's put into obtaining these grants so that we can beautify our city parks. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And then we had pulled next was B4?
Correct. Just a quick question. In the staff report, it's only one page. I noticed that it's asking us to approve an appropriation not to exceed $15,000 for college to career. I didn't see in the... I didn't see in the report, it is only one page, at least a tentative list of what was to be purchased and used for, so I was curious as to what those items would be.
It's mainly to pay for the dinner and graduation ceremony itself. Uh, we are looking at having about sixty-three graduates plus a few guests, and it will be at the Canyon this year, so, um, there's a additional.
Are those guests the parents of those graduates?
Right.
Perfect, okay, all right.
Yes.
Very good.
And then some odds in it, the certificates, the honor cords, different things like that.
Perfect. That was the only question I had on that. Thank you, um, Ms. Richter.
And Mr. Mayor, we are on, I believe, we.
Okay, so, uh.
One we had covered. I don't know if there are any other questions.
How about C one, then?
Hold on, uh, with respect to C one, I, she addressed it, but I.
You finish up on your item.
I was quiet, well, I was quiet because I actually need to recuse myself on this particular item.
Which one?
C one.
Okay, I mean, you don't have to lead the dais for it, you just announce, uh, I'll meet the city attorney, maybe the city attorney, but I believe you can announce that you have a, that you have a conflict on item C one, you want to recuse yourself, but you don't have to lead the dais, and we'll do a separate vote. Am I correct, uh, city attorney?
Fine, that's, that's fine on the consent calendar item, but you are supposed to state the reason for the conflict.
Sure, sure. I, I have an existing contract with a competitor of that company.
Okay, all right, so you'll be, okay, so, any other items, Mr. Lopez, Councilmember Lopez, is that it?
Uh, I pulled C four.
All right, C four.
Let me get to my page.
All right, C four.
All right, so we're talking about the sign, the sign that's actually right here on the other side of this wall. Um, I understood the staff report, it was, uh, it's built in the seventies, put in, it's been there now for forty, fifty years. Um, time just go by fast. Um, I was confused, though, the, the sign, it appears it's going to look like a wraparound on this portion of the building, and it's going to be LED, so we're not going to have what I would call the equivalent of a high school billboard marquee. We're going to do away with that concept after all?
Yes, it'll be a high-quality, uh, state-of-the-art LED, uh, screen, it'll be four feet wide and approximately, or four feet in depth and approximately fifteen feet wide.
The existing sign that's there, what will happen to it?
We are talking about leaving it there and actually refurbishing it, just as sort of a, uh, historical throwback to our, uh, mid-century look here at city, civic center.
No, I, I appreciate that, because I've, of course, with other venues in town, um, some residents are concerned about the tiki mission inn. There were some residents that approached me about what would happen to that sign, if it'd be removed, demolished. I think we should preserve it in any capacity. If it were to be removed, it needs to be preserved, uh, just like we did the crows and all that, all the other historical artifacts of the city. Um, that, that was, that was my question. I just wanted to know what was going to happen to the existing sign, if it was going to be removed, but, um, I, I am looking forward to the LED sign on the building.
All right, so with exception of item C one, can I get a motion for the remainder of the consent counter?
Mr. Mayor, on, on C one, I would, I would ask that the motion be corrected to approving the agreement subject to any necessary revisions by.
On C one?
The city attorney.
Okay. So I need a motion with exception of item C one. Can I get it?
I'll make a motion as, uh, presented with the exception of item C one.
Okay, is there a second to that? Second by Councilmember, Councilmember Johnson. So let's do a roll, uh, let's do electronic vote on item, um, the consent count, the exception of C one. All right, that's, that's adopted five zero, so, uh, I'll move for approval of item C one.
I will second that.
Attorney, uh, authorize the attorney for language changes, and in noting that Councilmember Lopez is abstaining on item C one, or recuse himself. Electronic vote, please. And Council, Mayor Paul Timber is second. Okay, that's adopted four, where'd it go? Okay, that's four affirmative votes with Councilmember Lopez, uh, recuse himself. All right, so we are now on item ten A, consider adoption of resolution, um, twenty-two dash thirty-three forty-four regarding censuring of Councilmember Benjamin Lopez. So I'll start the proceedings here, and I apologize, I probably have about eight, eight-minute discussion here, and then after that, uh, the city manager will do his presentation. So this is a somber moment for our community. Um, this, to my knowledge, this is the first time in the Montclair's history that the city has found it necessary to consider censoring, uh, one of its colleagues. When any one of us on the city council fails in our duty to represent the collective welfare and interest of the entire Montclair community, it becomes necessary for the rest of us to consider corrective measures, and that's what, what we are considering this evening on the, on the proposed resolution. If this city council adopts a resolution to censure, it not only admonishes the offending behavior and requests that it stop, it also conveys to the community and employees that our governing principles will not be tolerate, will not tolerate harassment, discrimination, bullying, or retaliation in any form from any employee of the city or from any member of the Montclair City Council. As I watched this process unfold over the several months, I observed that each of my colleagues in the city council, who were asked to seem to consider voting on the proposed resolution, tremendous resentment that they have been placed in this position. Now, as councilmembers, we were not elected to the city council for the purpose of watching over the behavioral of, of each other, but that is exactly what we're asked to do today. This city council must be clear in its deliberation tonight that the decision we make is made objectively and is based on the oral report and findings presented by us, by an independent workplace investigator. Just over a month ago, on March the first, the city council received from the independent investigator an oral report sustaining allegations made by city employees that inappropriate contact by Councilmember Lopez did occur. We learned that the investigator separately interviewed Councilmember Lopez and the employees who filed the allegations. Furthermore, Councilmember Lopez and the employees agreed to follow-up interviews related to their earlier interviews. Each party responded to the questions from the investigator, and each were given the opportunity to tell their versions of events and provide evidence. The independent investigator reported to us that based on those interviews and available ev, evidence, findings were made that, one, Councilmember Lopez conducted an extended conversation with one city employee about his sexual orientation, and, two, initially hid his identity from another city employee while communicating on social media dating sites. During these communications, sexually explicit content and photographs were shared. The independent workplace investigator concluded that the employees making the allegations had greater credibility than did Councilmember Lopez. The investigator supported her conclusions with reason and critical analysis that took into consideration available evidence drawn from those interviews and information provided by each party. Whether or not we, as the city council, individually judge the conduct and behavior of the city council was right or wrong, is not the debate we are having this evening. Our task is to consider the findings made by the independent workplace investigator. Tonight, this is why I define this evening's proceedings as a somber moment. We as city council are asked to censor conduct and behavior that simply should not have occurred. So a little recap, at the March twenty-first meeting of the city council, we heard from the city manager the reasons for consideration to censure and how the censure process works. We heard from the city manager that once employees of the city made allegations of inappropriate interactions by Councilmember Lopez, he was duly bound to direct a workplace investigation being conducted. To ensure independence in the conduct of the workplace investigation, last August, the city council approved a contract to hire a firm specializing in conducting independent workplace investigations. And the investigator from that firm did conduct the investigation into employee allegations of inappropriate interactions with Councilmember Lopez. We heard from the city manager that he implemented measures to stop the alleged inappropriate behavior and protect employees from continuation of the alleged inappropriate interactions. We heard from the city manager that he imposed building and employee access restrictions on Councilmember Lopez, and we are asked this evening to consider ratifying those actions by this, by the adoption of the proposed resolution. As I stated earlier, that on March the first, the city council received an oral presentation of the independent investigator's findings in closed session. In that presentation, the investigator sustained allegations of inappropriate interactions by Councilmember Lopez, and I will state this, there was many questions by the city council in closed session. Findings of an independent workplace investigators are outlined in the agenda report and resolution. The resolution to censure also states that on the, that on March the first, closed session, the city council was made aware of two verified complaints and lawsuits filed against Councilmember Lopez in the city. The lawsuits contain allegations of discrimination based on sexual orientation and unlawful sexual harassment. However, I'd like to remind my city council colleagues that it is the findings made by the independent workplace investigators, not the lawsuits, that now caused the city council's consideration of a censor, censure of Councilmember Lopez. So in order to provide some greater clarity of this matter before us, I want to be clear on what these evening's proceedings are and not about. First of all, the evening's proceedings is to consider adoption of a resolution that the, does not represent a judicial proceeding. Two, the city council has not taken any action related to the civil litigation filed by the employees against the city and Councilmember Lopez. Those complaints are, are to be addressed in proceedings separate from this evening's process. Consideration of a resolution to censure is essentially a public statement repudiating certain behavior. Four, the city council has not weighed allegations or complaints made by employees in the city against, uh, statements made by Councilmember Lopez. The independent workplace investigator made those assessments and reviewed the evidence presented to her, and in doing so, the investigator sustained the allegations made by the employees and presented the findings to city council on March the first. Essentially, the city council's purpose this, this evening is to make a determination as to whether or not the findings made by the independent investigators, as presented to the city council in oral, in the oral report on March the first, and, and incorporated in this resolution constitute sufficient justification to censure Councilmember Lopez. The city attorney has advised the city council that Councilmember Lopez has due process rights. Councilmember Lopez is free to make a statement this evening on this matter if he wishes. As to the matter of censure, we have heard from the city attorney that the city council has a legal right to censure or demonstrate disapproval of the actions of a city member of the city council. The city council does not, however, have the authority to remove a city council member from office. So, uh, based on these guidelines provided by the city attorney, the city council will proceed on this matter as follows. First, the city manager will make a, a presentation. Second of all, any technical questions about the censure process and the conduct of the proposed resolution should be directed to the city attorney. Third of all, uh, members of the public will be provided the opportunity to address the city council on this issue. I'll ask the, uh, the speakers to comply with this, with a five-minute time limit. And finally, the city council will consider adoption of the resolution. So I'm going to ask the city attorney, uh, the process I just outlined, is it correct?
It's appropriate.
Thank you. So, uh, do you have any additional guidelines, City Attorney Robbins, before we proceed with the presentation?
Not at this time.
Okay, so now I'm going to ask the city manager to go ahead and conduct a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. On two separate occasions in 2021, allegations were made by certain employees of the city that Councilmember Benjamin Lopez interacted with them in an inappropriate manner. Upon filing of the allegations by the employees, the city manager implemented measures, uh, to protect the employees from further harassment, discrimination, bullying, and retaliation, and requested city council approve, approval of an agreement to hire an independent workplace investigator to investigate the allegations. At its meeting of August second, 2021, the city council approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-seven with EXTTI for professional workplace services and expert testimony, training, and investigations. The EXTTI investigator, an independent workplace investigator certified by the Association of Workplace Investigators, conducted an investigation into the allegations. At a special meeting of the city council on March first, 2022, the council in closed session received an oral presentation regarding the investigation conducted by the independent workplace investigator. The independent workplace investigator sustained allegations that Councilmember Lopez, as a private individual, acting outside the course and scope of his duties, responsibilities, and performance as a member of the Montclair City Council, did conduct an extended conversation with one employee of the city about the employee's sexual orientation, and did intentionally hide his identity from another employee of the city when he and that employee communicated on social media dating sites, and that their communication included sharing both sexually explicit content and photographs. At the March first, 2022 closed session, the city council also received information regarding the filing of separate verified complaints and lawsuits brought by the same employees, also against Councilmember Lopez, containing allegations of discrimination based on sexual orientation and unlawful sexual harassment. At the March seventh, 2022 meeting of the city council, a motion was made and adopted to place on the March twenty-first, 2022 city council agenda, a discussion to consider censoring Councilmember Lopez. At the March twenty-first, 2022 meeting of the city council, following discussion to consider censoring Councilmember Lopez, a motion was made and adopted to place on this evening's agenda for city council consideration, a resolution censoring Councilmember Lopez, and ratifying actions taken and recommended by the city manager. Included in resolution number twenty-two, thirty, twenty-two, thirty-three, forty-four are the following. The resolution specifies the duty of the city council to residents and employees to ensure that local, state, and federal laws, as well as the rules, regulations, and policies of the city are complied with, recognizes that effective governance requires confidence in the integrity, dignity, competence, professionalism, and appropriate decorum and behavior of elected and appointed, uh, leaders, and fair, respectful, courteous, and dignified treatment of employees and members of the public. The resolution also affirms that elected representatives shall demonstrate the highest level of professionalism and not behave in a manner that is detrimental or adverse to the interests of the city. The resolution recites the city council's hiring of an independent workplace investigator to conduct an investigation into allegations made by certain employees that Councilmember Lopez engaged in inappropriate interactions. It recites the findings of the independent workplace investigator sustaining allegations that Councilmember Lopez, as a private individual and outside the course and scope of his duties, responsibilities, and performance as a member of the city council, did conduct an extended conversation with one employee about his sexual orientation, and did intentionally hide his identity from another employee when they communicated on social media dating sites, and that their communication included sharing sexually explicit content and photographs. Uh, the resolution also makes a city council finding that interactions Councilmember Lopez had with certain employees were reprehensible, inappropriate, abusive, and disrespectful, and had brought disrepute to the city of Montclair and to the Montclair City Council. The resolution declares that the city council does not condone or approve of the type of conduct and behavior exhibited by Councilmember Lopez, and finds it necessary and prudent to declare its strong disapproval of such conduct and behavior. The resolution declares that based on the nature of employee allegations against Councilmember Lopez and the findings reached by the independent workplace investigator sustaining the allegations, together with the filing of the two verified complaints and lawsuits by the same employees alleging unlawful sexual harassment and discrimination by Councilmember Lopez based on sexual orientation, the city council determines there is sufficient cause to censure Councilmember Lopez. The resolution incorporates by reference protective measures implemented by the city manager as enumerated at the March twenty-first, 2022 meeting of the city council. It incorporates by reference the March three, 2022 notice to Councilmember Lopez entitled, "Restrictions on Access to City Facilities," and prohibition against contact with city employees. The resolution declares that censure is necessary to affirm that the conduct as described in the resolution will not be tolerated and shall be prevented from being repeated. The resolution finds the recitals as stated in the resolution to be true and correct. Finds that Councilmember Lopez did engage in inappropriate interactions with certain employees of the city. Finds that Councilmember Lopez, as a private individual, acting outside the course and scope of his duties, responsibilities, and performance as a member of the city council, did engage in interactions with certain employees which were inappropriate, abusive, and disrespectful, and by his conduct brought disrepute to the. abusive, and disrespectful, and by his conduct brought disrepute to the city of Montclair and Montclair City Council. Resolution finds that Councilmember Lopez's behavior and conduct, in addition to being improper, unprofessional, unacceptable, and detrimental to the city, is reprehensible. Further, that Councilmember Lopez was acting solely as an individual without any authorization or ratification of his actions or behavior by the city council, and that such conduct and behavior is contrary to the legitimate interests of the city of Montclair. The resolution finds that Councilmember Lopez, or rather, the resolution also incorporates protective actions implemented and taken by the city manager and orders the following: The Councilmember Lopez is removed from all appointed city council committees, subcommittees of the city council, city-sponsored committees, including but not limited to socially event, recreation, and community-oriented committees, and inter-agency committees and boards involving city of Montclair representation. The Councilmember Lopez is prohibited from speaking on behalf of the city council or representing the city council in any capacity other than as authorized in the Montclair Municipal Code. The Councilmember Lopez shall refrain from one-on-one contact, either on a personal or professional level, with employees of the city of Montclair, and shall be prohibited from participating in public safety ride-along events provided through the city's code enforcement, police, human services, and fire departments. The Councilmember Lopez is prohibited from overnight stays in public safety crew sleeping quarters. The Councilmember Lopez is prohibited from the use of any locker room or exercise facilities owned and operated by the city and available to or designated for use by employees of the city. The Councilmember Lopez's access to the city's universal Z drive where documents, photographs, and communications between employees of the city are shared is removed. Any specific city-related document requiring Councilmember Lopez's attention will be forwarded to him by the city manager, city attorney, or the city clerk under separate communication. The city clerk is directed to arrange for delivery of city council agendas and other city-related documents requiring Councilmember Lopez's attention to his home by email or otherwise arranged for their pickup by Councilmember Lopez or his representative in a public area at City Hall. All inter-agency email and text communications from Councilmember Lopez shall be directed only to city council colleagues, the city attorney, or the city manager, and to the city clerk for purposes of city council agendas and elections. Notwithstanding the foregoing, any communications concerning this matter and the two lawsuits filed by the two employees shall be between Councilmember Lopez's legal counsel and the city's defense counsel. Except as otherwise provided for in Resolution Number 22-3344, Councilmember Lopez is prohibited from engaging in communications in an official or personal capacity with any employee of the city of Montclair via electronic communications, social media, and written correspondence or other media. The Councilmember Lopez is prohibited from city-paid, non-paid travel to conferences, meetings, training, and other events where representation of the city is involved, and paid or non-paid travel provided through other public or private entities where representation of the city of Montclair is involved. Councilmember Lopez is required to attend city-approved sexual harassment prevention training and other training as may be required by the city manager. Training should occur within 30 calendar days following adoption of Resolution Number 22-3344. Furthermore, such training shall be repeated annually, subject to scheduling by the city manager. Other actions, as may be considered and implemented from time to time, as necessary to protect the employees of the city from harassment, discrimination, bullying, and/or retaliation, and all ratified actions are to remain in place until otherwise rescinded by the appropriate authority. By adoption of this resolution, the city council does censure Councilmember Lopez for the behavior and conduct described in Resolution Number 22-3344, and the city council expresses its strongest possible disapproval and disavowal thereof. By adoption of this resolution, the city council affirms that such behavior and conduct as described in Resolution Number 22-3344 shall not be tolerated, and such behavior and conduct shall be prevented from being repeated. City council finds that Councilmember Lopez's behavior and conduct to be outside the course and scope of his performance as a member of the city council. City council declares that Councilmember Lopez shall comply with all restrictions imposed as enumerated in Resolution Number 22-3344 and as ratified and ordered by the city council to be enforced by the city manager. Directs the city manager to immediately notify the city council if Councilmember Lopez engages in future conduct prescribed by Resolution Number 22-3344, declares the intent of the city council in the event of future improper and unprofessional conduct by Councilmember Lopez in violation of the provisions contained in Resolution Number 22-3344, to pursue all legal remedies available by law to prohibit such conduct and enforce compliance, provides that Resolution Number 22-3344 takes effect immediately upon adoption. There is no fiscal impact related to the city council's consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 22-3344, and it is the prerogative of the city council to consider adoption of Resolution Number 22-3344. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Before I go to questions, I just want to announce to the public, if you wish to speak, if you haven't submitted your card to speak, please do so now. And if you're on Zoom or on the phone, please either activate your raised hand. If you're on a computer-electronic device, activate your raised hand now. Or if you are on a phone, please hit star nine to speak, and I'll ask to do it now before we start the public comments. Any questions by the council members? Anybody have any technical questions they have wished to ask? If anybody has no question, the process, no questions on the resolution? Okay. So then we will go back. Now we go to public comments, and again, I'll remind the public that you have a total of five minutes to speak. And again, if you wish to speak, please hit star nine. If you're on a telephone, please activate your raised hand feature if you're on a computer electronic device. And if you're in the audience, please fill out, kind of what's called these days, a white card or a blue card? What we have, what's called these days, Andrea?
Speaker card.
Huh? Speaking card request. May I just call it a speaking card request? And submit it to our city clerk. So I'm going to hand this over to the city clerk and ask her if she's got any speakers.
For now, I just have Rob Piperzki.
Okay, Rob.
Tonight, this council will vote to hopefully censure Councilman Ben Lopez. As the public speaks about this upcoming censure, Councilman Lopez sits on the dais, acting like none of this matters. He wants this to go away, hoping the public has a short memory. These despicable acts have been investigated by an independent investigation firm specializing in these types of harassment and criminal acts. Interviews were conducted and documented. The sexual harassment was shown to be factual with enough evidence to move forward. Councilman Rue seemed to be calling into question the findings of the investigation, at one point saying he has not spoken to Councilman Lopez, so he could not get the facts from him. Councilman Rue went as far as wanting a court to decide this matter four or five years from now. It appears Councilman Rue is reluctant to protect the employees from future attacks. Councilwoman Martinez, I commend you on the fact that you listened to the presentation and paid attention to the outlined facts that were presented and called out Councilman Rue about the facts of the case. Councilman Rue, I can save you a lot of time. Councilman Lopez will say he did not do it, and he will shift blame to others. I'm sure your briefing on this investigation was well documented, and any questions you had were answered. I am sure the investigation admissions were made and documented. Having been in law enforcement for 44 years, I have had my share of investigations, and I know how people try to manipulate trying to claim their innocence. They tell their story, leaving out important facts. They tend to hang themselves on the finer points when the investigator gets to clarify their story. I am sure that is what happened during this investigation. A censure is not enough. A finger shaking at best. Ben Lopez must go. He has brought shame to his office, this council, and his family. I can't imagine the family's disappointment and embarrassment. Every member of this council must publicly demand that Councilmember Lopez must go. Resign. Anything less is a finger shaking and shows they do not care for the safety and well-being of employees. If an employee were to do this type of reprehensible behavior, they would be fired, and rightfully so. If you censure Councilman Lopez, he would be required to take a sexual harassment training, again, something he had done six months before he began his predatory attack behavior on employees. In the future, if any employee were to create a hostile working environment or sexually harass another employee, then their punishment cannot be termination. Councilman Lopez will have created a new sexual harassment standard of a finger shaking for any guilty parties in the future. As a council, I have heard you say you will not allow any type of bullying in this city. You must stand firm on your guiding principles. You must condemn this behavior and demand Councilman Lopez to resign. As a council, what are you afraid of losing? Votes for doing the right thing, protecting the employees and residents that make this great city? If Councilman Lopez remains in office, it is not a safe place for any employee to work. He must go, and the sooner the better. How much more must he cost this city? Resign now. In listening to the actual censure, or the censure paperwork, it appears that Councilman Lopez will not be able to attend any functions, will not be able to go to any presentations basically outside, will not be able to attend any type of, you know, training. So what are we having him on the council for? He's not going to do anything except cast a vote, unprepared vote, because other than what he reads in the agenda, he does not get the extra information by going out and learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city clerk, do we have any, another speaker?
I think that's it.
We'll see anybody on our Zoom. Nobody on Zoom wants to speak? Anybody else in the audience? Nobody else? Okay. All right. I guess we'll bring this matter back to the city council. I just want to clarify, as city attorney, there was a comment that Councilmember Lopez cannot participate in any city event? Is that what the resident states, or has the resident stated he won't be recognized and won't be able to speak, but can still attend those city-sponsored events?
Right. I think the drafted resolution covers the fact that he would not be able to represent the city at any, at any city event or other event, but certainly that doesn't prevent Councilmember Lopez from attending certain events.
Just wanted to clarify. Okay. Okay. Any comments from members of the city council? Anybody want to comment? Anybody?
I would hold my comment until after the vote.
After the vote? Okay. Any comments here? Well, maybe I should say this, and I know that this room is kind of empty, and there's not a whole lot of people here, and maybe people think this is not important, and I have to disagree with that. And the reason why I disagree with that is this council has a fiduciary responsibility. That's why we're elected. And obviously, we're elected to establish policy of the city, but we're also elected to manage the issues of the city, including personnel matters and matters of the city's assets. And so our job is to ensure that this city is fairly run, managed, that we are preserving laws, that we're protecting our employees. And I kind of look at this like a criminal incident, you know? When a crime takes place, the public doesn't show up and deal with the crime. It's the police officers that come and deal with the crime. Thank God for that. But that's what takes place. So, you know, this issue is important to city of Montclair because the independent investigator conducted an investigation, conducted interviews with those employees to impact it, and conducted the employees with Councilmember Lopez, and came to that conclusion that discrimination and harassment did occur. This city council met with that investigator. Yes, that report is not available. It's a confidential report. We cannot release it. If you have a question, the city attorney can better explain that than I can. But we did receive an oral presentation, and when we received the oral presentation, we did ask a lot of questions. I asked questions, and some of the questions was I wanted to make sure, one, this was true. This actually did take place. The allegations made were true. They're not made up. So I had specific questions just addressing that particular area, and then I used my own logic to decide if the information provided to me was accurate. So I can't tell you all the questions I asked. I can't tell you how the investigator responded. I can't tell you my logic. But the conclusion I came in, when I was in that room with my other three colleagues, was the investigator was accurate, sincere, and the investigator, and this investigator has a history of doing these type of investigations, the conclusion the investigator settled on, again, was accurate. So, you know, these type of cases, if Mr. Lopez was an employee, these type of cases among employees, and this is, you know, 2022, it's pretty even these days, sexual discrimination, sexual harassment, people lose their jobs. City employees engaging in this, and not just city employees, any employee in the private sector or in the public sector, including here in Montclair, most likely will be terminated for their position. That's a fact. And I don't have to say that. And it's out there right now. This is how, it's all over in 50 states now. Sexual discrimination, sexual harassment leads usually to termination. So we don't have the power to remove people, to remove a council member. That belongs to the electors of the city of Montclair through a recall election if somebody decides to do it, or through the next general election when Mr. Lopez's terms is on the ballot. That's where that's decided. So I think it's important today, this evening, that we have to adopt this censure, and I realize it's more of a slap in the hand, but there are some parameters in terms of restrictions of access to City Hall, sitting on the committees, or can't sit on committees, but for the most part, it's more of a slap in the hand, and I think it's important today that we have to adopt a censure. We have to do it for two reasons, or more than two reasons, but we have to do it for the community of Montclair, because that's our fiduciary responsibility to the city council to do. Second of all, we have to do it for our employees. We have to show our employees in Montclair that your rights, employees, your rights under federal law, under state law, under city policy are respected, and those who have violated will be disciplined for it. So we have to do it for that matter there. And lastly, we have to do it because we, as a city councilor, heard the investigator, asked her questions, went through that process to understand the complaints that were made, understand the interviews that took place, understand the evidence the investigator had, and understand how the investigator arrived at her conclusion. And based on that, we have an obligation to move forward with this censure. I think I said enough, and does anybody else want to speak? Did you want to speak?
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, when I became a council member, I was so excited because I was going to have the opportunity to serve the people of Montclair. I was grateful to be given that privilege to improve the lives of Montclair residents. Never in a gazillion years did I think we'd be at this place. I don't think any of us want to be at this place where we're talking about behavior of a colleague. This is not why we became council people. We, you know, presumed that everybody would keep focused on what we're really here to do, and I'm really disappointed that we're here in this place where we have to take our time, effort, and money away from the residents to talk about a colleague. I'm really disappointed. Let me know when you're ready for the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have no other speakers. If you wish to make a motion, feel free.
Yes, sir. I move to adopt Resolution Number 22-3344, disapproving and censuring certain conduct and behavior of City Councilmember Benjamin Lopez. and behavior of City Councilmember Benjamin Lopez and ratifying protective actions taken and recommended by the City Manager.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any additional comments on the motion? If not, then let's have electronic vote, please. Okay, so that motion is adopted for yes and one no. So I'm going to continue on talking after we just had this motion here, and I will begin by saying that the employees impacted, their legal rights, free of harassment and discrimination were violated by Councilman Lopez. I'm deeply disturbed of Councilman Lopez's legal behavior towards city employees, and I apologize to the city employees of Montclair, that those who are impacted, and for all city employees. We have great employees that should be treated with professionalism and respect. When I endorsed Ben in the 2020 election, I trusted him to respect our employees and not engage in discrimination or harassment. That trust has not, has been violated. It's too late to rescind a previous endorsement, but I assure you, there'll be no future endorsements. Now, going forward, my concern for Councilman Lopez to remain in the City Council is follows. One, will he be an effective and positive member on the City Council, or will he be a distraction? Two, will he comply with the restrictions placed on him to protect city employees? Three, will employees be traumatized with his presence, including those impacted and those who are not impacted? And finally, number four, how much legal cost will this city incur for his illegal misconduct? A further concern, those impacted employees will be unfairly interrupted with their employment here in the City of Montclair. If City Manager, if Councilmember Lopez makes an appointment to be in the administrative office area or attends city events, causing those employees to be scarce and furthermore probably traumatizing them. I said earlier, if Councilman Lopez was an employee, he will likely be terminated for his misconduct by many employers, including here in the City of Montclair. And obviously, again, I stated before, the City Council has no power to remove a council member. So I think for the best outcome for the City of Montclair to overcome these issues and to move forward is for Councilman Lopez to resign. I hope he seriously considers it for the better of Montclair. Thank you. Any more comments, Councilmember Proton Ru?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. My vote tonight is based on information as presented to me and made known to me in a closed session of this City Council by the investigator. The only information I have to act on is information given to me by the investigator. I have no other knowledge. I have no way to know beyond what the investigator has told us. I do not believe anyone on this council is reluctant to protect an employee. That hasn't been the history of this city, going back long before I was on this dais. I don't think anybody up here is afraid to protect an employee. There are rules that must be followed. At the last meeting, I did say, we've only heard one side. We've heard what the investigator said. What she said has, you know, been what she asserts to be the evidence. That's all I can act on. But I will remind everybody, and it's a system I believe in, that I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the United States. Those constitutions also have a proviso in there. They're hallmarks of our democracy, that everyone is innocent until proven guilty. Everyone. If you stop somebody and give them a ticket because they ran a stop sign, they choose to go to court, they're going to have to say guilty or innocent. It's going to up to that judge to decide guilt or innocence, and no one else. That is a hallmark of our system, and we must remember that. Every one of us sitting in this room has rights, is defined by the Constitution. We have rights. When someone asks me about this case, I will not say anything from closed session, period. I have had people ask me, and all I say to them is, well, this is an ongoing legal investigation, and I cannot comment. I don't believe anybody else at this dais should be commenting either. It's a very simple statement to make, something along those lines. This is an ongoing legal investigation. I have no comment. Let the system play out. Let the process work. It doesn't matter what you may personally think or what I may personally think. The process must work. That's what's important. My vote again tonight, it's based on what I have received and what was presented to me as information. That's all I have to base this on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lopez has been known to make hateful, homophobic, and sexist remarks publicly and privately. This issue's been raised numerous times at our council meetings, and unfortunately, that behavior has continued and perhaps become aggravated since Councilmember Lopez has been elected to a position of power. What has been disclosed and what is being disclosed at these meetings is a very PG version of the facts that were corroborated by the investigator. As long as Councilmember Lopez is on the City Council, these employees are not going to feel comfortable. There's nothing we or the city can do that will get their lives back to normal until he is gone and not sitting on the City Council. And as long as he is sitting on the City Council, the entire city will continue to pay financially and with its reputation, and these costs are increasing rapidly. I would demand that Councilmember Lopez resign from his seat on City Council. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're done with that, and we'll move on to, where are we now? Communications. So Marcia, you going to give us some good news?
Sure.
All right. You always, you always give bright, colorful information. Makes everybody happy.
All right. Here we go. I'd like to welcome our Montclair community to attend our outdoor Easter extravaganza and to-go pancake breakfast scheduled for Saturday, April 16th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. in Alma Hoffman Park. Please bring your own bag or basket to collect your candy-filled eggs at a variety of Easter-themed games. Prize eggs and an opportunity drawing for a large Easter basket for children's ages 12 and under will also be offered. In addition, there'll be socially-distanced photos with the Easter Bunny for $3 per photo or $1 using your own camera. And let's not forget, the Ontario Montclair Kiwanis Club is sponsoring a to-go pancake breakfast for $3 that includes two pancakes, two sausages, and one juice while supplies last. Additional sponsors for this fun event include the City of Montclair, of course, Women's Club of Montclair, Montclair Police Officers Association, and the Montclair Firefighters Association. We hope to see all of you there.
Perfect, then. Thank you very much. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item as indicated in the agenda, and I'd like to ask the council, meet in closed session, to discuss a potential case of litigation. Other than that, I have nothing else this evening.
Okay. City Manager?
Members of the City Council, I'm going to ask Chief Abels to come up to the podium and just wants to give you a brief rendition of what occurred last Thursday in the city. You have in front of you Proclamation Number 22-3346E. This is an emergency proclamation issued by the Director of Emergency Services, which is the same as the City Manager, proclaiming the existence of a local emergency. The reason for the issuing of this proclamation is to preserve the city's right to ask for reimbursement from the State Office of Emergency Services in the event we receive extraordinary costs related to the incident on Thursday. As you know, we had a number of agencies responding to that incident from surrounding cities, and we also had the Environmental Protection Agency on hand to do a survey of the atmosphere around the area. There was a release of chlorine gas. We had to evacuate the area. Before we could bring people back into the area, EPA was called out to do an analysis of the environment to make certain that it was okay for them to bring, for us to rescind the evacuation order. In addition, EPA will be doing the cleanup related to the site, and so in order to preserve our right to collect any extraordinary costs that the city may otherwise realize, that was the reason for the issuing of the proclamation. So with that, I will allow Chief Abels to give you a perspective of what actually occurred on Thursday.
So as most of you know, we received a call at approximately 9:30 in the morning on Thursday regarding a fire that was occurring down at 4201, I believe it was Third. I don't think it was State, but nevertheless, the property runs from State Street down to Third Street, just east of Silicon Avenue. And as fire personnel were responding to that location, there was multiple explosions. I know the mayor and the City Manager had an opportunity to come down to the site to see what had really transpired at the time, but what you would have found was a significant number of small one-pound propane canisters, some MAP gas canisters, some fire extinguishers. You would also find refrigerant bottles, the typical type that you would see transported to a job site by refrigerant companies when they're doing repair work or installation of air conditioning equipment. There were also large acetylene cylinders that you would see commonly at the local, like air gas and types of facilities that you could acquire, those types of chemicals for welding and things of that nature. There were also some large medical-grade oxygen containers. There was one, in fact, very, very large medical-grade oxygen container that was hooked up to a cutting torch for a, with a five-pound or a five-gallon propane bottle that was being used to cut apart an aluminum trailer. During this event, what had transpired that led to the response was it was our understanding that some individuals were hired to come do some work on the property, and they were attempting to, in a unsafe manner, render some of these containers in a safe manner. They were trying to either remove the valves from the tops of the cans or puncture the cans themselves to relieve of any additional remnants of gas that could have been in these containers. It was my understanding that a spark ensued and a fire developed, and the fire got out of control. The five employees that were working at the location that day immediately fled the location. They essentially ran completely away from the place, and subsequently, the fire started these explosions, and it became a huge event that drew upon the mutual aid of the allied agencies, including LA County Fire, San Bernardino County Fire, and a few other agencies, Chino and ourselves, for the initial fire response. It was a pretty good fire that created a lot of catastrophic events with the containers right there on the property that sent them flying like missiles onto other people's property and upwards about 750 feet away from the actual property, basically close to the north side of Mission Boulevard is how far south some of these containers went. Once they got the fire out and they felt it was more under control, they started to do an assessment of the location, and during that assessment, it was determined that one of the acetylene tanks was off-gassing as a result of the seals being compromised by the fire itself. That recognition of that caused all of the personnel responding to push their perimeter back of the location and trying to maintain an observation of this tank for a period of time, expecting it to probably off-gas at a slow enough rate that it would render itself safe over time. However, while we were trying to monitor that, we realized there was also some containers that contained chlorine gas, and that chlorine gas began to off-gas out of one of its valves as well as a result of being compromised by the fire. Some weather stations were set up to monitor the air in that particular area. It was determined in consultation with hazmat personnel that there was a good possibility that failure of the tank could result in a catastrophic dispersment of the chlorine gas, and with discussions on the magnitude of what could be released and the direction of wind travel and how significant that could impact people in that immediate area, a decision was made that it was best to evacuate the area while we were trying to assess and contain that particular canister that was leaking at that time. I do want to thank all of the other city personnel that assisted us with that, particularly Marcia and her department, who helped open up the gym facility as a resource and a location for the evacuees to go to, which I know many did go to. While that was going on, we had decided that it was best to request additional hazmat personnel, so we ended up receiving hazmat personnel from Sandman Well, Ranch Kukamunga, Chino Valley Fire, San Bernardino County was already on scene, and I know I'm missing somebody right there. I don't want to forget them. Ontario, Ontario came out, came out as well. If you were there to see the amount of personnel and to see the amount of work that was going on with that, it was a tremendous sight to see. Not only was it a tremendous sight to see, it was a tremendous concern about where the costs were going to be going and the severity of this issue. So in consultation with the City Manager, the decision was made that we should declare a local emergency. We operate, we activated our city's EOC. We notified the county EOC to activate as well, which they all did. We proceeded to continue to monitor the situation. In consultation with San Bernardino County Hazmat, we also notified the EPA. EPA elected to respond. It took them a while to get out there. All the while, we were still monitoring this tank that was slowly off-gassing at an acceptable rate, for lack of better words. I mean, of course, you don't want it to leak out at all, but we were trying to mitigate and manage the situation as such. We had came up with several contingency plans and consulting with other expert individuals that have dealt with chlorine gas cleanups in the past. It was an unusual situation with this one. It wasn't just a simple leaking tank, which often might be addressed by hazardous material responders. It was one that no one really could answer as to what would happen with a tank that has been compromised by a fire. It wasn't just a simple leaking of the chlorine gas. So when we set up the weather stations in the area, we were able to monitor things at a concerning level that slowly depleted down to a more acceptable level of gas that wasn't going to harm individuals outside of the property line. But all that developed over time as it progressed. When the EPA arrived in consulting with EPA, it was determined that the scene was stable at that point that could allow evacuees to return to their home. I believe it was probably close to 6:30, 7 o'clock-ish that we lifted that evacuation order and allowed people to go back to their homes, but that didn't end, obviously, our time with that night. We then did an assessment of the property ourselves, and then we also had to clean up, obviously, the street. up, obviously, the street, at least the street area immediately adjacent to the south of the property because people are going to be going back to their homes, and these bottles and containers were still strewn about the streets. And so myself, other police officers, code enforcement, and Public Works, including the EPA gentleman that responded, all assisted in picking up all of these items and getting them back onto the property. The EPA came out the following day with an intent to clean up. Unfortunately, we came across the same container that started to leak a little bit more rapidly as the day started to get hot, when the container started to get warm. And so San Bernardino County Hazmat came out with our fire department personnel that particular day, and rather than doing an evacuation, again, the decision was made to place the container that contained the chlorine gas into a 55-gallon drum and then render it safe by filling it with water and containing it in that fashion. So they felt by the time that the length of time that the container still remained itself intact, that it was safe enough to handle at that point. And so at about 9:30 in the morning on Friday, 9:30, 10-ish in the morning on Friday, that's when they made those changes and decided to put that container into another drum. So it was rendered safe at that moment. It was decided that the EPA would come back out today. And so far, the EPA and San Bernardino County Hazmat has been working with the property owner to take responsibility and cleanup of the hazardous chemicals. That is the direction the EPA always wanted to go all along. There was some concern that that wasn't going to happen on the day of the event. However, it seems that the property owner is working with them to make sure that all of that, all those chemicals get actually cleaned up and rendered completely safe and removed from the property. And then, of course, all the scrap metal and the cans that are no longer hazardous, those items will then obviously be removed from the property as well. So if I can answer, I know I probably gave you a long-winded present.
Yeah, I think a lot of people heard it all the way up here at City Hall and everything. So it was definitely an event that, one that I had never experienced, you know, and so it was ever-changing, and so there was constant evaluation. I kept City Manager Starr updated as much as I could, calling him, sending him text messages so I could relay the information about where we were at and where we were going. And all in all, I think everybody that responded did an outstanding job. I think it was, like I said, one of an event that you don't always encounter, especially with that significant number of canisters. I'm sure you saw a lot of it on the news, and it was definitely an unusual situation. So.
Well, thank you, Chief. And I just want Chief and City Manager Starr, and then I know Monica's in the audience, and Marcia's here, because your department's also played a role, and Michael, because code enforcement. I just want to recognize the Fire Department, our employees, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and code enforcement, and Public Works, and Human Services, you all played a big part last Thursday. I know in Marcia's department, part of your role was the evacuation center. You opened the community center, and your team was helping out in the evacuation center. Obviously, the Police Department was securing the area. They also had the evacuation center. The Fire Department, of course, they were, along with Ontario and the other agencies, fighting this fire, and then obviously afterwards, the investigation and being there. You had a crew that, I think they were there late. Did you have a crew that come in overtime? Was there a crew that came overtime?
As far as, like, Public Works and everything?
Oh, the Fire Department.
I don't know if somebody came in specifically on overtime for that, but...
They were out there, so, and you know, and obviously, it was a very dangerous situation when you had canisters go up in the air, and I know the firefighters have their helmets, but there's also members of the public that could have gotten hit from one of those canisters and could have been very serious. So luckily enough, the injuries were very minimal. You know, Public Works was out there, and I know they were putting up barricades at Mission Street and State Street, dealing with that. And of course, I know that Gabe and Robert were out there, code enforcement, and I know that the city manager mentioned to me that he wants to have a program in that area to help, that's where I'm looking for, Ed, clean up some of the outdoor storage areas or making sure that the hazard issues are to a minimum or eliminate it, if I'm correct.
We're looking at developing an enhanced investigation program where we would routinely go down into these areas to investigate the properties to make certain that they are in compliance with existing fire and building codes.
Okay, thank you for saying that. So overall, it was great, and I'm hoping that we can get a chance to go out there, do some investigations, and do some cleanup to eliminate these future possibilities. Any comments from the council? I have Mayor Pro Tanru.
Yes, thank you. First of all, Chief, thanks to you and everybody involved in this for handling this situation in a very professional way. I was on a Zoom call in my office at that time, and I had several people emailing me and texting me, saying what's going on in Montclair. At that time, I didn't know. And they were basing a lot of misinformation by what was apparently on the TV news or on the radio. And I'm glad you have clarified this tonight because some of that information wasn't exactly correct. And it's always good to hear what the truth is and not what the media or, you know, what happens when somebody hears something, then they start telling somebody else who tells somebody else who tells somebody else, and it becomes very difficult at that point. So thank you for clarifying this for the public that is listening, and thank you for clarifying it to this council.
Oh, Councilmember Johnson.
Kudos and ditto to what you've, what everyone else has said, but I wanted to talk to you as much as the work that you had to do, you and all the team and everybody who was there and everybody who participated from police fire, all the departments did a great job. But what you may or may not have realized is the impact that your actions had on some of the residents. I met a guy out here who was coming, trying to find the community center, and he was just, he looked shell-shocked. And he had his children with him, and one of his, the girls was on the phone with mom, I guess, and saying, "We don't know. We don't know anything, Mom. We don't know anything. We're just trying to find some help." And he looked lost, and I said, "It's that way. Go that way." And, you know, and once he got inside the community center, he was able to get some refreshments, but more importantly, there were big toys all around for his children to play so that they, it wasn't, they didn't have to feel like some doom and gloom. And I also met some other people who live across the street from the explosion, and they were showing me the videos, and they had a great resemblance to the people you see in Ukraine, who are talking about how devastated, how devastated they are. And so the quick action of everybody, because people were thinking they were going to have to spend the night on the floor in the community center, of course, I know Marcia had caught us, but they didn't know that. They were just really scared and unsure. And when the call came out, when the announcement was made that they could go home, it was like a great exhale, a great sigh of relief, and that was because of you and all the other people who were there. So thank you for what you did.
Well, I did want to tell you one thing that I kind of left out on the presentation, that how we went about evacuating the area was, one of my lieutenants was in connection with the county sheriff. We actually employed the reverse 911 to a specific area so that we could make those notifications. But then we also had our law enforcement officers, another lieutenant, set up a team to actually physically go to each of the locations and make contact with people that were still there that maybe didn't get the reverse 911 or didn't comply with that request. And so they actually physically went in and did those evacuation notices. And so it was, it was definitely a huge event. It was very much a teamwork event, and I'm very proud of everybody, including all the allied agencies, and how well we all worked together and how it resulted in its resolution. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Chief, kudos again. Thank you for your collective efforts and all the responding agencies. It's very much appreciative. Like Councilmember Rue and my colleague, Ms. Johnson, getting various inquiries, texts from residents and concerned individuals. Majority of my texts were, "Guess it's fireworks again," and some folks were jokingly saying, "Since you're the firework guy, I guess you guys have an issue on your hands," because at first, there was word going around that this was another Ontario incident, but in Montclair. And I'll be honest, at first, I thought that possibility. I thought, "Oh, no, I hope it is not an Ontario incident in our city." Glad it didn't turn out to be, but nonetheless, the magnitude and the seriousness of the issue is nonetheless of great importance. But to hear that it was canisters and pressurized propane tanks or whatnot, that is very serious. So thank you. Convey our collective thanks to all them as well. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, nobody else wants to speak? So I will go down to the mayor. So we have one item to consider, realizations and city council committees. So what I want to ask this evening, we take a motion, a vote to remove Councilman Lopez from the code enforcement, planning commission, interview panel, Public Works, planning commission liaison, and the IBUA sewage alternate. And then at the next meeting, we can discuss Philings' positions. Does that sound fair to everybody? So I'll make that motion for the removal. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Martinez. Any comments? If not, let's have a vote. Okay, that's four yes, one abstain. And now we will go to council communications, and I'll start with my, I'll start with my left. I don't know why I always go to the left. Maybe because you read a book, you start left to the right, so don't...
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson.
All's quiet on the Johnson front.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, just a couple inquiries. Got a resident that was inquiring, and I drove by there too, and I, obviously, I drive by there quite a bit. The wall, south side of San Bernardino Street between Montevista and Fremont. What is the latest on addressing, repairing that wall, redoing that wall?
South of San Bernardino Street?
South side, south side of San Bernardino, between Montevista and Fremont, across from the hospital, across from 5050 San Bernardino.
Oh, okay, so we do plan on having a consultant work up a design for that wall, and that's been on our game plan for the last couple of years. But the council did approve funding in relation to the bonding, so we will be looking at working with a consultant to come up with some sort of design element. Of course, we can't replace the wall because the wall is private property, and the only thing we can do is construct something on the right-of-way, which means that we will have to take away some of the sidewalk area, whether or not that will include planters, incorporating some sort of live plants or creeping vines remains to be seen yet, but it will certainly entail some sort of a trellis type of a structure that will be on the city's side of the property, going the entire length between Montevista and, yes, and Fremont Street. And then we'll also look at the other section that is further to the east. It's not as in disrepair as the section across from the hospital, but we'll look at that section as well. And as soon as we have a design from the consultant, we'll bring it back to the city council.
If I might, the question was, is the proposed sign, future proposed sign, to be taller than the existing one there?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the wall.
The wall.
I'm sorry, yes, the wall. The wall, I'm sorry, not the sign. Did I say sign?
Yes, wall. If it would be constructed taller than the existing wall that's there, because if you notice, some of those property owners have done additions to that wall to raise and give themselves a little bit of added privacy or whatnot. So if the designer staff can have them take that into account, to have it greater than the existing height of the wall, that would, I think that would be beneficial.
Well, we will have to comply with city code, which will limit it to six feet in height. However, I think if you look on the properties on the opposite side, they are at a lower grade, and therefore, the elevations that they've added on top of the walls, which generally consist of some fiberglass paneling or some other forms of material that provide some additional privacy, those will probably have to be removed. They are in violation of city code. So if we do a six-foot wall paneling on the city side, that should provide them the additional privacy that they need.
And tonight, we just adopted as part of the allocation of monies that we received by virtue of the rescue plan funds and some of the COVID allocations, correct me if I'm wrong, we adopted the new signage on this, on this property and the building. Part of that funding that we also adopted at prior meetings was related to the landscaping issues at Station Two. Last inquiry at a council meeting, I believe two meetings ago, it was stated that we would go out to bid or find a design company to do the landscaping. Where are we on that status?
Our Public Works consultant, Rosemary Hornig, is actually working on that project. In fact, she just showed me some design elements last week. And so as she goes forward to complete her design elements for the project, then we will hire out for the, we will either hire out or we will have Public Works do the improvements. We're also looking at doing a walkthrough of both the fire stations, 151 and 152. Chief Abels and myself have had conversation about that. I've spoken to Matt Paradise, who is in charge of our facilities, and we're looking at actually making recommendations to city council to expand the remodeling at both of those fire stations. I know right now, we're looking at doing some plumbing improvements related to the interior at the stations, but we have found that perhaps the plumbing issues are probably more severe than what was otherwise anticipated, so there's probably going to have to be some significant restructuring of the shower rooms. So we are looking at probably doing a much more extensive remodeling, not only to the shower rooms, but other areas at both of the stations, including 151, where we're looking at breaking the shower room down into single shower stalls in the event that the city does end up hiring a female firefighter in the future.
You mentioned the plumbing. Has there been any further discussion or looked into the incident regarding the heavy rains in January and the flooding of the work room and laundry room at Station Two?
Yes, in fact, we had an environmental inspection analyst come out to take samples of both air quality as well as the fungus that was, or mold that was growing in the area. There was no black fungus or black mold. The air samplings demonstrated that the environments were fine, that there were no toxic chemicals in the air. And the leakage that caused the mold under the sink in the kitchen was actually more of a result of human error as opposed to actual physical plumbing issues. The plumbing issues really are related more to the shower stall areas, and there are also some water backup issues in the, on the roof in some of the drainage channels, but that's been addressed as well.
All right, thank you, sir. Just one other item, Mr. Mayor. While those bringing forth allegations have had months to bolster what some might perceive as a favorable case for themselves, the fact of the matter is this. I have only had 18 days to be legally and formally informed of the lawsuit. To this day, I have not been given a copy of the report, of which I was interviewed once, not multiple times, nor was I asked to be interviewed multiple times. Get your facts straight. My attorney has asked several weeks ago for the report. He asked for it today, and to date, our city attorney has failed to respond to him to give him a formal reply, and we have not seen the report. It is prudent for anyone to not comment on allegations for which they have not seen a report, its detailed accusations and alleged content. That's the situation we are in. While one side proceeds to rush to conclusions and try this matter in the court of public opinion, one side's due process has not been fully met, and one side's, one side has deliberately left the other in the dark. And here we stand. That is why I have not made any formal statement, because I have been left in the dark to the full extent possible. full extent possible. This will, as Councilmember Ru stated, will be played out in the courts, and both sides have the right to be heard and should be heard. And Mr. Ru, you are correct, as of now, only one side has been heard. With that, I will make no further comment. Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your time, I am done with my comments this evening.
And Mr. Lopez, I'm very disappointed in your comments. I would hope you had an apology with your comments this evening, which you have not. And I'll remind you again, investigator met with you, the two other employees, an experienced investigator, I might add, took your information, the information of the employees, made an analysis and determined that you did engage in sexual harassment and discrimination towards at least two employees here in the city of Montclair. As far as the city attorney, I would suggest that your attorney contact the city attorney of Montclair and have those for the discussions.
He has.
As we know, we have met in closed session, and the document you're speaking of is a privileged document, and if that document's going to be released, probably, I'll let maybe the city attorney discuss maybe how that document gets released, but perhaps that conversation should take place between your attorney and his attorney. And I believe part of the reason that document remains confidential, because the two other employees who are involved also have a right to their privacy, and that's part of the issue that we have here. But you have your right to speak, but I tell you right now, the facts that we dealt with in the oral presentation, based on the evidence that you provided to the investigator and the evidence provided by the two employees, clearly indicated that you did violate their rights in terms of sexual harassment and sexual discrimination. So I'm sorry that we've gotten to this place, but we have to take action. We just cannot ignore the issue. And again, I will repeat this, we have had employees in the city of Montclair terminated for sexual harassment and sexual discrimination, and some of this, some employees, and I know I can't go too far, have, we've had some employees recently terminated for these reasons alone. There's no excuse for your behavioral compared to the excuse to behavioral of these employees that were terminated. Mayor Pro-Tan Ru.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had other items tonight to talk about, but due to the lateness of the hour, I will talk about one thing. We mark 54 years today since the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King on the balcony outside his room at the Lorraine Motel in Memphis, Tennessee. He was there to support the sanitation workers, the people who drove the garbage trucks and collected the garbage, support their right for much better pay, better working conditions, and benefits. He was 39 years old when he was assassinated. His assassin was only 10 months older. You can look at two lives and how they play out. One using his abilities for good, the other using his abilities for things that were not good. We do commemorate Dr. King on his birthday, which is appropriate. But tonight, I wanted to bring something here. I happened recently to meet a gentleman named Ronaldo Brown. His daughter works with me in my office, and I've heard over the years about him. He was a member of the 1968 and the 1972 Olympic team. 1968, he was one of the youngest Olympians at the Olympic Games in Mexico City. He was there when, and these were two very historic Olympics, he was there when the, many of the African-Americans at the Games represented the U.S. gave the Black Power salute. He was also there in 1972, when the Israeli athletes were murdered. He has an interesting life and an interesting story. He's put it into a book, How I Got Over. I asked Mr. Brown if he would autograph a copy for our Montclair Public Library for their African-American history collection, and he did so. I couldn't get interviewed from the library here tonight, but I will make sure that I make a presentation. It's a fascinating book on his life, and he wrote to Montclair Public Library, "Thank you for your support. High jump always, Mexico City, 1968, Ronaldo Brown." And I really enjoyed talking to him and hearing his stories, and so I want to try to leave on a higher note tonight, thank you.
Well, thank you. You know, there was a basketball game tonight, I don't know if anybody likes the NCAA basketball finals, and it was a great game. North Carolina was up 40 to 25 in the first half, looked like to be a blowout, and then Kansas turns it around and wins the game 72 to 69. So I would rather speed at watching this game tonight, being here for all of those reasons, but nevertheless, that's part of the job I have. So we're going to go into closed session, we have committee minutes, excuse me, committee minutes in the agenda, and now we'll go into closed session. Thank you.